Award and they announce that every year at their conference, which unfortunately took place virtually this year due to COVID-19. The outstanding new principal of the year award is given annually to a person who's demonstrated outstanding leadership in their school, in their region, and at the state level. The individual also demonstrates their enthusiasm for principalship by supporting, by support from students, parents, teachers, and their peers. And I can attest, Mrs. Stockwell has definitely met that criteria and is so deserving of this award. Mrs. Stockwell started as a middle school teacher. I think she had experience as a para before that, Sealing Mile, and also did some after-school programming. Was an EL teacher at Walnut and Westridge Middle Schools and a learning facilitator before becoming the assistant principal at Bar Middle School. And she served, also has been the Jefferson principal since the start of 2017, which you all know. At that time was going through a transition as they were building a new building and they started the demonstration schools for rigor work. And so a lot of changes that Mrs. Stockwell had to navigate through. I will say Mrs. Stockwell is always advocating for what's in the best interests of the students. She's gained the trust, respect, and support of others through her willingness to learn and grow alongside us. Mrs. Stockwell holds herself accountable, never backs down from a challenge, and we are so proud of you, Mrs. Stockwell, and for this award. Congratulations.
Thank you. I've been with the district since 2002, when I started out as a para at Sealing Mile. And then I was an after-school supervisor at the after-school clubs at Dodge. And then I was a substitute teacher for a semester, and then I decided to go into teaching, and then all the other things that she mentioned too. But throughout the whole entire time, I have loved Granton Public Schools because they're so supportive and the board has been so supportive and involved. And I appreciate all of it. And when I was writing the application, I just wrote down all of the teams that I have worked with. And it is so apparent that we have a great set of teams that lead the school. And so I'm so thankful for the work that I get to do with everyone here and the difference that we get to make. So thank you very much.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, too. Now, does anybody have her as a principal? I don't. Oh, Carlos, would you like to say anything as a parent?
She's awesome. Got to put up with two of my kiddos. Again, every time I go in there, she's out there. Staff's great, so thank you, seriously. From the parents that I know that have their kids there, it is just such a warm place and you do such an amazing job with the staff and with the community and the teachers. So thank you. Well deserved.
Really appreciate, and congratulations. That's quite an honor. All right, 6.2 is the All-State Choir and All-State Band. Mrs. Worthington.
Okay, and I have an easy job tonight. I'm just here to introduce you to Mrs. Charity Libree, who's on our Zoom with some of our students. And she will provide this recognition.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. It's an honor to celebrate some of our high school students who were selected for the All-State Choir and Band. And of course, that was virtual this year. So they did have a chance to re-prepare a piece and attend sessions via Zoom. And one of the things that Nebraska did this year, because things were Zoom, is they allowed students to have kind of a master class with their specific instrument. So there was college professors from major universities all over the country that provided master classes focused on the specific instrument of our students. So a really great learning experience for them. And tonight, I'm excited that we have four students that would like to introduce themselves, their instrument or their, their voice part, and just a sentence about what this experience meant to them. So we will start with All-State Band. We had Abraham Lopez, and I know he's on Zoom, so if you want to unmute and introduce yourself and your instrument and what this experience meant to you.
My name is Abraham Lopez. I think I play trumpet. This is my second year for All-State Band. I tried out last year. And for me, this experience has been the best. Before COVID started, I had opportunity to go to Lincoln and play with awesome players that tried out too. And that's kind of, just to wrap up quickly. My goal was to always try out for Allstate ever since I was in middle school. My teacher was Mr. Cole. And, and he, he told me, he's like, if you want to become a good trumpet player, you gotta, gotta push yourself to become something else. And that's what I did over two years. I, I didn't have the opportunity because we were having some problems with our teachers and everything. But finally, then Mr. Jacob settled in, he gave, gave me the opportunity. And I kind of had this passion to play trumpet because when my, kind of my future job, I want to be a middle school band teacher. Hopefully that can happen if I keep trying like I did for Allstate. And I tried out for these two years and thank you to him and some other teachers that helped me out. I was successful and I got in and played with the best trumpet players out there. And it was a wonderful experience and I just thank everyone that helped me through this. And it was the best.
Thank you, Abraham. And then we also have Ryan Sadomka, who is here tonight via Zoom, if you want to unmute. And show us your face if you don't mind, so that the board can see you. So Ryan, do you want to tell us just a little bit your instrument and then what this experience meant to you? Ryan, I think that you are muted, not on Zoom, but I'm wondering if your computer, if the microphone is crossed out? Ask those girls to give you a hand. We can't hear you. Okay. Oh. Okay, we're going to come back to Ryan. So keep working on that. We'll get it figured out. Is Samantha with you as well? Okay, yes. Okay, so Samantha is also a member of the choir. And all of our kids are at the high school tonight because they have show choir and show band rehearsals. So if you're wondering why, we're just busy at it. Okay, and then we do also want to recognize Kendall Bartling, who is at the meeting. So Kendall, if you would just share with us what the experience meant to you to be in the Allstate Choir.
Yeah, sure. To be in the Allstate Choir this year is a totally crazy experience because, believe it or not, this was my first year even in choir since middle school. I kind of said my last year, I'll give it my best, and my best apparently was good enough to be recognized on a state level. And that's, that's just a great thing to do. And you know, being able to perform at such a high level at the school, in the program that I'm in, and with the Allstate program is just mind-blowing to do at 17. I mean, these programs and the things we're doing, some college musicians don't even do. So really proud and really glad for all the support I got at the school level from Mr. Libree and from everybody else. So thank you all.
Thank you. And then the other members of the Allstate Choir are listed in your agenda, but just could not be with us tonight due to rehearsal. So those are the students we're happy to honor this evening.
All right, well, thank you. We really appreciate you being here tonight. We look forward to being able to hear you in person someday soon. So, and Ryan, can you, can you try again?
Ryan, does the microphone work now? I don't think so. Stinker.
All right, well, let's give him a round of applause. All right, thank you again for being here. All right, we will move on to information items then. 7.1, sorry, I got to get back up here, is Campus Highlights: Westlon Reading Interventionist Position and Its Impact So Far.
Yes, thank you. And we actually have them live on Zoom, and I bet they've tested their microphones. Hopefully they're working just fine. And we're very excited. This is one example of how our principals and instructional coaches and the, the school leaders kind of came together and just said, we're looking at our data, we see that we have a need that we need to address. And they came to us with a proposal. And so they were pretty excited about updating us just on how things are going. So I'm going to turn it over to our principal, Mr. Happ, and let him explain a little bit about their, their progress.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. It's good to be here. Like Dr. Palmer said, we're very excited about this opportunity that we've been provided. So I'd first like to thank the board for allowing us to take this on and be able to make this happen for our students at Westlon. Can I get some screen sharing, please, so I can share my screen at all? There we go. Okay. Everyone see my screen okay, hopefully? Okay. Alrighty, well, I'd just like to present to you, based on our reading interventionist, who we started, we hired, starting January 4th of this year. So we're just a little bit over a month into it. So I'd like to introduce, my name is Mikhail Happ. I'm the principal at Westlon Elementary. With me, I have Shandra Myers. She is our Title I Specialist. And then I also have Alex Jaden, who is our new reading interventionist at our school. So looking into the first pieces of what we wanted to do based on our rationale for reading interventionist is just looking at, focus on our grades one through three, especially with the Nebraska Reading Bill, and thinking about how our students in these lower grade levels, we really wanted to key in on foundational skills and get them up to grade level by the time they got into third grade in order so that they could use those skills to better comprehend at the upper grade levels. Many times, we're seeing some of those deficits happen because of some of the missing foundational skills that they find, that we find in the lower elementary grades. Westlon was, had, Westlon's average was below the district average in some of these grade levels. So we really wanted to target specifically grades one and two. Part of that was due to some of our student dynamics in those grades. We had some high EL populations. And then even how we can best support some of those students that are right along the edge of being benchmark. And then also thinking about our teacher dynamics. So part of this position was not only pulling small groups of students in interventions throughout the entire day, but also supporting our teachers with their tier-run instructional practices, especially with the new curriculum with CKLA, and also looking into how they can co-teach some of the lessons. So Alex has been pushing in specifically in one classroom for first and second grade, specifically with students in the most needs. Based, that's how we based what classroom she's going to go into for now. Granted, based on our data, we'll continue to adjust and change that as needed. But right now, she's supporting a teacher with classroom, with tier-one instructional practices and students within those classrooms as well. Looking at interventions before our interventionist, we were really spinning our wheels. We had everyone on deck from Mrs. Myers to, you know, three great, three general education paras. We had our special education staff helping and also our grade-level teachers implementing multiple interventions throughout the day in order to help meet student needs. And it, it just always felt like we just needed, if we could just have one more support to pull an extra group of students in order to help get them to that benchmark, that would be all that we would need. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Mrs. Jaden, and she's going to talk a little bit about the reading interventionist support and what her schedule looks like.
Yeah, so I get to, I'm Alex Jaden. I don't know if you can see me. I get to support, win times daily for grades K-3. I also get to, like as Happ said, I get to go into some tier-one classrooms and support them with CKLA instruction in first and second grade. And then I also am pulling five students during flex three times a week. And those are kind of our bubble students that are right there, right below benchmark, so I can support them as well. And then part of my schedule is also planning with first and second grade teachers to help support in their tier-one instruction. And then I attend their PLCs as well. I also progress monitor the students that I am working with so that I can really be involved in their data and really help analyze the decision-making in PLCs. And then we also are doing some data analysis monthly, and Brittany Bills has been coming over and helping us with that as well. And then based off of the grade-level needs for the teachers and students, I'm able to support core instruction. I am supporting right now in tier-one, I think it's 13 first graders and 17 second graders in tier-one instruction. And then in intervention, I am able to support 17 tier-three students in both first and second grade. And then I'm also to, able to support five tier-two students three days a week.
And I'm Shandra Myers. I'm the instructional coach at Westlon. And just some impacts that we've already started to And just some impacts that we've already started to see from this position is really closing some of those gaps in learning. It's been great to have an additional certified staff member to support interventions. Actually, with the hiring of her position, all of our students who are below or well below the benchmark are getting met with every day with a certified teacher for 30 minutes of targeted intervention. And then just being able to support the teachers, provide tier 1 core instructional practices, and a full-time staff member dedicated specifically to foundational reading skill and practices. And then this slide just represents the progress that we're seeing already. The 2 plots on the graph represent where we were at the beginning of the year, to middle of the year. So as you can see, our kindergarten, which is tier 1 instruction, was really making some great gains. And so we really targeted that grade 1, grade 2. The hearts represent positive growth towards gold. And those are the 23 students that Alex is working with. And so of those 23 students, you know, she's just been doing 5 to 6 weeks of intervention, and we're already seeing some really great growth. And I think it's important to highlight that 17 of those 23 students are in that red. So we're really making some gains towards grade level expectations, which is exciting.
All right, so, you know, going back to, I'd just like to thank, you know, the Board of Education, the L4L team, and also, you know, Dr. Palmer and Brittany Bills for all their support in making this happen for us, but also just all the work in helping us get into our data and really target some of these students and their needs in order to help get them where they need to be, especially by the end of 3rd grade. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Yes, Dr. Brows.
Well, I was on the Personnel Committee and on the Finance and Facilities Committee when you came to us with this proposal, and I am so glad to see that the results are reaping some benefits for you at Westlon. We've got 3 brand-new board members here, and could you just take a minute, or maybe Dr. Palmer, a minute to talk about what tier 1 and tier 2 instruction is and what the difference is between the 2?
Yeah, I was thinking about that, you know, we, as educators, we get caught up in a lot of our jargon, I apologize for that. So, yes, tier 1 is just really what all kids get instructionally. So we want to make sure that all kids have access to grade level content and grade level standards. And so that is our foundation. So when kids aren't able to meet those expectations with that support, like all kids are getting, then we want to add some additional supports for those students, whether it's in addition to time, working with specific skillsets, or with additional, just additional support. And so depending on where the students are, where the students are in their learning, it's how much additional support they get. So hopefully, that helps explain, thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions for our team?
Mrs. Turgens.
Yes, I actually really love this, so thank you all for putting in so much work. And I'm just curious if the students have shown more confidence, or maybe if they verbalized anything about this additional time that they get with you all?
I'm gonna turn it over to you guys to answer that one.
Yeah, I can answer that, yes, we are seeing a huge gain in confidence. They are so excited to go work with Alex. I think one of them, just the other day, was like, "Oh, Mrs. Myers, I'm reading, I'm reading, I'm doing so good." And we've already made some adjustments with the kids we're working with. We actually have a couple who we've gotten to benchmark, and we are just looking for a couple more data points, and we're gonna move them on. So we're very excited about the progress we're seeing, and you can see it in the kids, too.
Yeah, and I see it in their tier 1 classroom, too, especially the classroom that I get to support in. Those kids are so excited when I come in, when they are doing some of the strategies that we're working on in intervention, and they're actually getting to apply it into their classroom. It's a huge confidence builder for them.
Great questions. Thank you so much, this is an amazing team. They are all about the students, and you can tell they code very deeply about their learning. So thank you, Mr. Happ, Mrs. Jaden, Mrs. Myers, for being here tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Take care.
Okay, 7.2 is Shoemaker.
Okay, so this one is on video recording, and this is Shoemaker Elementary. Mr. Wolf and his team are gonna tell you a little bit about the Eagle Eye News. And I think what I love about Mr. Wolf and their team is they're always looking for ways to allow students ownership in what's happening in their school. So this is response to that.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Hedman, and I'm here to talk to you about our Eagle Eye News at Shoemaker Elementary. Due to the pandemic, we decided that we needed to be creative and come up with a new way to do our morning announcements. So we decided to set up a news desk here in the media center and use Zoom to deliver our morning announcements to all of the classrooms. Each morning, we have our team of 5th graders that share the daily news through the Zoom call to all of the classrooms. We currently have 24 5th graders are part of our news club. Each week, 4 of those are assigned to be our news anchors and our directors. Our news anchors are actually on camera delivering the news, while the directors are behind the scenes, running the camera and the Zoom call. I have a few of our 5th graders here today to tell you about their experience with Eagle Eye News, and then we'll have a small clip of our actual Eagle Eye News. We hope you enjoy it, thank you.
Hi, my name is Owen Kramer, and I like being on the Eagle Eye News team because I love technology and I like helping the news anchors.
Hi, my name is Peyton Pfeifer, and I am part of the Eagle Eye News team. And I enjoy it because I know other students enjoy seeing different kids do the morning announcements every day.
Hi, I'm Richard Pablo Matias, I am a part of the Eagle Eye News team. I like it because it builds up my confidence.
Hi, my name is Ella Meyer, and I am a part of the Eagle Eye News team. My favorite part about being a part of this team is being able to share information with younger kids in a fun way.
Hello, my name is Gavin Bird, I'm a part of the Eagle Eye News team. And I enjoy being on the team because it allows me to share important information with the other kids.
Hi, my name is Sophia Alves Barza, and what I like about the Shoemaker Eagle Eye News team is that it makes me feel happy and special.
Hi, my name is Cooper Kramer, and I'm part of the Eagle Eye News team. I like being on the Eagle Eye News team because being in front of the camera helps build my confidence.
Hi, my name is Sadie Semper, and I enjoy being in the Eagle Eye News team because I enjoy informing other kids at Shoemaker about what's going on in our school.
Welcome to our Eagle Eye News.
My name is Sophia Alves Barza.
And my name is Sadie Semper.
Today is Thursday, December 20, 2020.
The weather today is going to be partly sunny and 50 degrees.
Tomorrow, the weather's going to be much colder, and there is a chance of snow. So please dress in warm clothing and remember your winter coat.
Here's some Shoemaker Eagles to show us how they will be dressing warm for this cold weather.
First, we have Hayden. Hayden's got her gloves on, the hat's covering her ears, and her nice warm coat is zipped up. Thank you, Hayden. Next, we have Brexley. Brexley's coat's zipped all the way up, she's got a scarf on, her gloves are keeping her hands warm, and her ears are covered, good job, Brexley. Next, we have Preston, he's got his Shoemaker blue coat on, he's got flashy gloves, hat's covering his ears, thank you, Preston. And last but not least, we have Maverick. Maverick's got his warm gloves on, coat zipped up, and of course, we've got the Nebraska hat covering his ears. Thank you, Maverick.
For lunch today, we're having Mandarin orange chicken, rice, a veggie cup and side salad, and you can improve.
We have 2 birthdays tonight today, in Miss Alber's classroom, Noah Casey is 28. Happy birthday, Noah.
In Mrs. Alber's classroom, Alan Martinez Ramirez is 29. Happy birthday, Alan.
We have several announcements today, so please listen carefully.
First, please remember that if you are wanting for lunches over the winter break, please return the lunch ones to your teacher Friday.
Also, we are still collecting Toys for Toys for Tots. Please bring any new toys you'd like to donate to the front office.
And lastly, these classes will be recording their holiday music program tomorrow. If you are in these classes, please remember to dress nicely. Here are the classes.
In kindergarten, Ms. Aldridge and Ms. Westard.
In 1st grade, Ms. Mittenbrink and Ms. Rouse.
In 2nd grade, Mrs. Brummer.
In 3rd grade, Mrs. Alber.
In 5th grade, Mrs. Kramer.
Now describe our pledges.
Please stand and face the flag.
Left hand at your side, right hand over your heart.
Bodies will be moved still.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for our pledge.
I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others.
I will be respectful, be responsible, be safe. Have a great day.
I know our Shoemaker families and our Shoemaker staff is all out there, and our kids are all watching tonight. So, great work to all of you, we're so proud of you and proud of your little news story that you have every day. So thank you so much. If you have questions, I can take those back to Mr. Wolf, he would be happy to answer.
Mrs. Albers.
It's not a question, but that just brought me absolute joy. I loved it, and it makes me think, can we do this in high school? Could we do something? And then Kendall just said, I wish they would have had something like that for me. It was amazing, and the kids were so good and so well rehearsed, and it, sheer joy.
Mr. Hulinski.
Along the same lines with Miss Albers over there, that was awesome. It wasn't elementary school, it was taken to a news station all of a sudden. And I, do you know how the students are picked? You said it's only 24, obviously, there's more than 24 5th graders there. Do you know how they're picked? Is it, they'll find a job for anybody, or is it hand-selected, or how does that all work?
That's a great question, I will take that back to Mr. Wolf and get that back to you guys, I'm not quite sure how they choose.
But it was very well done, good job.
Thanks for sharing, we needed that, love it.
And I was really excited to do the pledge allegiance at the end, just to get everybody out there.
Yeah, it was awesome. Very good. All right, we'll move on to 7.3, which is the Workforce Prep Lease Agreement 2021 through 2023, Dr. Dexter.
Well, we are renewing, or asking you to approve the renewal of the lease agreement for the Workforce Prep Academy, also known as the coffee shop. And it's hard to believe that we've been there 4 years, and we're asking to go for formally 3, and then we have a 1-year option that we can go ahead and do 4 while we process a new lease agreement. But Mr. Oberg has just been wonderful to work with, and he has some real ownership of the program. And he did ask that we increase it by $100 a month, just because he takes care of all the taxes and that kind of stuff. So we are looking at $3,100 per month coming out of the Special Education Fund, and that's the lease agreement.
Does anybody have any questions? And they haven't been able to open up the coffee shop yet, right?
No, they want to so bad. We are there, you know, looking for things to do, they're bored because, you know, we've really cut back on being able to get out in the community. So we have the opportunity to deliver some food-to-table boxes. And so, for our Food for Thought Kids, so Holly Bowsleger is gonna work with them so that a parent could drive by, get the box, and take it. So it's just kind of a job to keep kids going.
Awesome, well, hopefully, next year will be more normal, thank you very much. Okay, 7.4 is the Principal Building IT Connectivity Project, Mr. Gerhart.
Good evening, I have 3 things I'll be discussing tonight, the first of which is the principal building. Since the acquisition, obviously, we need to get it up to a point where we can have staff and students using the facility, and so that's what this proposal is this evening. We did shop around, typically, the way, the SOP for how we handle buildings is we contract with our existing vendor to provide that lit fiber service between the building and this building so that we have a standardized, homogenized network to maintain, having, you know, 24 locations and the amount of staff. It's just standardization, obviously, makes it ideal. But when we got the proposal back, you know, to do that, there's always a monthly charge with it. Well, it's not terribly expensive because we utilize the E-Rate program to pay for the monthly charges for those types of things. Even the one-time charge to put the fiber in was around $26,000. So we went to a local vendor, got a bid to do it ourselves, and actually lay private fiber between Westlon Elementary and the principal building. So the easements actually overlap on the north and south sides of that street, so it was pretty simple. We just drop out of the data closet there, go over, do some horizontal boring, and I believe there's conduit and access to get us back into the closet that we need at principal. So that's the first part of the proposal, is the fiber installation. The nice thing is, with the charge, one-time charge, now that we don't have a monthly payment. So we just have connectivity to that through our Westlon connection, and we have the capacity to support it. We have 10 gig internet from all of our schools back to this building, so we'll just trunk that back over the existing line. The second half of that is, in order to get, you know, the building's quite open, but once you want to start using conference rooms and things inside, and we have the HVAC systems online, the door access, the security, the telephones, when you start getting into that, we have to get the network infrastructure up to speed. And we have a skeleton framework of things that we've collected over the years, and they're making it work today so that we do have some sort of access for monitoring fire alarms and sprinklers, and, you know, when it gets to minus 30 and decides to freeze, and you don't want to find out about it a day and a half later if something's spraying all over your building. So we have it in place, but this is to bring it up to our standard. So this would be the power over ethernet switches, the wireless access points so that we could support having that building full of people and still the same network connectivity that we expect from GIPS. So those 2 things together amount to $65,370. And this is an action item tonight as well, primarily because there's already some plans. I think Dr. Palmer has been busy figuring out what to utilize that space for with some professional development and things like that going into spring and summer. So it's somewhat urgent that we move on that. Are there any questions?
Nope, I don't, doesn't look like it. I did just want to make a comment because you shared about the professional development, which is very appropriate that we would use that because it's got large spaces and classrooms. But I shared this with Dr. Grover, there is some rumors out there that we've already decided what's gonna go into the building, and I just want to publicly say, no final decisions have been made. And I think we talked about it on the town hall, right? That we're gonna have that master facility planning where this building will be talked about. So just want to state that again, that it's appropriate to use it for professional development since we have it. So, but no final decisions about what will be there permanently, so, thank you. So 7.5, your E-Rate projects.
Okay, I've got 2 projects, so again, for the consideration of the new board members, E-Rate is the Universal Service Fund. So on every telephone line you've ever had, you pay that USF charge. It's a fee that gets tacked right on the top. And that goes to the Universal Service Administrative Company Corporation, and it's their job to direct those funds based on FCC regulation. And so they bring those back to your schools and libraries, and then they handle a couple of different connectivity programs. E-Rate provides districts like ours incentives and rebates to purchasing data connectivity and cabling and things like that. And for a district that has the high needs like we do, the amount that they reimburse us for those expenditures is actually 80%. So for every dollar we spend on qualifying things with the E-Rate program, we get 80 cents back. So both of these purchases tonight are partially or wholly supported by that program. And the reason I say partially is, you know, there's a wiring project we'll talk about at the high school. And the reason I say partially is, you know, the, there's a wiring project we'll talk about at the high school. Um, they support data wiring when it's used for data, but they don't necessarily support it when it's used for, um, CCTV systems. So, because everything's going on to the network, they, they won't pay for the cabling to run to the security camera that's running over that wire. However, um, they do, they do pay for anything that goes to an access point, to a projector, to a computer on the wall, um, et cetera. And so, that's really what we're going to be focusing this on. But obviously, since we're in there, we're doing the work, it makes sense to get it done all at the same time. Um, so what we do is we go through a process, we fill out some forms, we do an RFP, we send that out and we start to collect the bids. We're in the middle of that process right now. The reason that I'm here today without a completed bid to show you is because the way the timing works on this, you put out the form, you have to wait a certain amount of time. Once you get it, you have to award the bid within a certain amount of time. If you don't do it by a certain date, then you don't end up getting the funding for it. So, it really is, we're, I'm going to bring it to you. This is a best guess estimate. I always try and estimate high so that we know that this is kind of the outside of where it's going to be. And then we'll bring it together at the, um, next board meeting with an actual proposal from the winning bidder. So, for that, we're looking to add, um, new fiber wiring between the 11 network closets at the high school and, uh, and the connectivity, um, to all the rooms at the high school, all the office locations, the gymnasiums, the auditoriums, et cetera, to bring all that cabling up to the CAT 6A specification, which will handle the multi-gig connections that the next generation wireless systems need. So, total cost for that, approximately $400,000. Obviously, um, excluding the, uh, cabling for Mr. Petch's CCTV systems, um, GIPS, the general fund cost would be in the neighborhood of $112,000. And then the remainder of that would be paid out of the E-rate reimbursement. Questions? All right. Should I keep moving? All right. Next one is, um, speaking of next generation wireless technology, we, uh, we did the original RFP back, um, in 2012 for the secondary schools for the wireless. So, we have some access points that are actually still seven years old, almost eight years old now. Um, and they need to be replaced, right? They were the cutting edge at the time and they are no longer. And so, this proposal is to replace that bulk. To give you an idea, you know, this is for 400 access points. We actually have 1,000 throughout the whole district. So, this is just a, a smaller portion of that. We used this E-rate funding mechanism, um, five years ago to make some replacements and again, last year to make some replacements. So, um, this will be, uh, kind of a, you know, another step in the refresh. But what this gets us is the ability to, to upgrade the operating system on the entire wireless network to take us to the next step, which includes a lot of buzzwords that technology people like to use, like cloud-based, artificial intelligence, machine learning, blah, blah, blah. Ultimately, it's going to help us diagnose problems faster. It's going to get higher speeds to the classroom, to the devices that the kids are using. So, uh, total on that's going to be approximately $230,000. And we anticipate just 20% of that coming out of the general fund. So, Dr. Rose, I think I know what the next question is. These are not necessarily new dollars being used.
Well, I, I just think it's important that everybody know that we're not adding to the budget. You brought it to financing facilities. It was a question I asked there. But we're reallocating resources from your budget.
Correct.
And we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul and we're not asking Paul for more money.
Right. So, the one thing about technology is it moves really, really fast. And, and the, the economy is a scale you get and the changes that you get in it. Um, we can have an idea of what we need to replace for capital equipment every single year, but because of the costs and the changes and the, and the scalability of the equipment that we can get, sometimes the need for that in the, in the place that we had it allocated isn't there anymore. And so, those are decisions that we end up making each year is if I don't have to buy that new cluster or I don't have to buy that new storage network because the one I have lasted longer than we anticipated it to last or because the cost for the one that I purchased last year was less, all of that factors into where that capital money can get expended. So, as we think about these big projects that come up periodically, that's the stuff that's in my budget that either, um, is deferred maintenance because I don't have to replace equipment because it's still performing well enough or because, um, we've, we've allocated those funds, um, through a depreciation mechanism, uh, back to the, the purchase the next year.
Yeah, technology is even greater than dog years, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, all right. But Mr. or Mr., yeah, Ms. Harson.
I just appreciate it. And again, uh, I do mentioned, uh, all the terminology and things, how to fix it. But when we were in our meeting, you mentioned something along the lines of it could be a student with an old iPhone or I, something with software and that could cost something. It's just crazy how technology continues to move and sometimes it's not that we're just, I remember 10, 15 years ago, it was like, man, do we need to buy this just because we're going to be out there? But there's just so much changing. So, appreciated the, the simple terms for me.
The anecdotal story there is that we had a classroom that consistently would have, just the entire class would drop offline and, and then it would come back up and then the whole class would drop offline. And when we finally got a spectrum analy- analyzer into the room and we could pinpoint what was going on, it was actually, uh, a couple of generational iPhone that had a bad NIC card in it. And when, uh, when the person would get that out to start using it to transmit data on the, on the network or even not on the network, it was such broadband noise in the room that it dropped all, all the machines off. That happens and it's not specific to any brand or any device or whatever. It just, that happens over time.
Mr. Bartley.
I just wanted to say, yeah, um, upgrades to the system are always appreciated because I have been in that spot where you know you're in the middle of a project and then it just drops. So, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
It's always good to have tools that work. All right, I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point six is the aviation agreement. Mr. Phillips. How many times have you been here for this? No.
It's like Groundhog Day, yeah. So, I thought I'd start out tonight with a quote by my favorite athlete of all time, Michael Jordan, who said, "I failed over and over and over in my life and that is why I succeed." And that's the, the approach that, that I've taken with this. Um, we, we've already had the notice for renewal of our insurance. That's how long we've been trying to, to get the, the rental agreement and the, the co-insurance and, and all of that in, in place. We knew at the start that, or we had a, a inkling at the start that we were going to do, try and do something that nobody has done. We found out that nobody has done this and, and there's a reason why. Um, and the, just the whole process of us trying to be named on Trigo Dugan's insurance, them trying to be in, added on to ours, um, was just a, a big mess. Um, but where we got to with this, um, it's step one. So, our, our plan is still in, in motion. It's still in view. It's just a, a few years out in terms of doing it all of ourselves. Um, but what we've been able to work out with, with Trigo Dugan is we will contract all of our flight, um, instruction through Trigo Dugan. So, our staff member, TJ Norris, um, he'll actually, he's a part-time employee for Trigo Dugan. He'll be acting as a, a Trigo Dugan employee and all flight instruction will be done outside of the school day, afternoons, weekends, summer. Um, and that will allow us, um, Trigo Dugan will, will bear the responsibility, the initial primary responsibility of the, the coverage. And then our insurance policy that we have will add in on, on top of that. Um, but by doing that, um, we have this agreement, obviously signed by Vince Dugan from, from Trigo Dugan. He wants to, to get it done and, and get it up and going. So, I know I've said this before, but this right here will officially get our students in the air. Um, and initially, um, it, it'll work out for the positive. Um, Mr. Wickman has funds designated for flight instruction out of his, uh, academy balance. We did the numbers. Uh, initially, it'll be cheaper for us to contract these services because of the time that we would have had to spend paying TJ, uh, an additional stipend outside of the, the school day. Um, it'll actually be cheaper to do this contracting through services. Um, but the best part about this, uh, we have commitment from the, um, Arthur J. Gallagher Insurance Company that as we build up experience and build up insurable time and flight instruction time, uh, that we will be able to, to work to, uh, the capability of getting our own primary insurance policy, which then would open them up the door to, uh, potentially getting our own plane in the future down in the road and, and then truly doing it all of ourselves. But, um, a huge step right here, I think there's probably students in the aviation pathway that are watching tonight. Um, but it's a long time coming. Uh, we finally got it done. So, this agreement will allow us to get kids up in the air. And I will be coming back for, uh, as an action item a little bit later, but I would open that up to any questions.
Sorry, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Hulinski.
Just a quick question. I know that, uh, UNK has an aviation program. Have you reached out to them to see what they're doing to kind of supersede some of these problems that you might be facing when you get this thing off the ground?
Um, in the secondary world, it, it's a lot different because of, of how they do that. Um, we, they're on, they serve on our advisory board as does, uh, UNO officials. So, um, we're working it out right now in terms of our goal of being able to offer that as dual credit or at least get our students to wear little ladder in and, and give them, uh, an opportunity. Um, once we have, once we get to the point where we have primary coverage, uh, then we can tap into the, the UNK students who, once they, um, get to their certain point in their, their pilot, uh, they have to provide flight instruction time. So, they do it that at a significant discount. So, it would open up more opportunities for our kids to, to get up and fly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for your perseverance. We appreciate it. All right, uh, the fiscal year 2020, 2021 project list. Mr. Petch.
All right. Do the best I can in the past. I thought we had an actual work session on, on this list. Um, and we took a good hour plus. And, uh, so I'm going to try and get that done and quite a bit less than that. Um, I'll, I'll kind of rattle through some of these. Uh, we have some new members. So, um, just to say, this is the front page, the project list, what we're recommending to try to accomplish this year. Uh, the rest of the list, uh, that accompanies this has each building listed with each building's needs. And we rate those. I'm, my process is to establish a, a list of, um, things we add to it, go to all the buildings, uh, review this with principals, uh, get their input, uh, come back and finalize that, uh, with their ratings and then work through that and try to, um, prioritize the highest of those needs. There's actually 42 pages, uh, to this list. So, if, you know, if you would like to see that at some point later on, just, just let me know. I can get it to you. It's not a problem. It's just kind of bulky. I gave you a hard topic tonight because it's a little easier to read this than it is to, uh, uh, maybe try to read that on the computer. So, just, just to kind of go through how this list shakes out, um, you can look on the top there. So, I list the descriptions and then to the right of that, there's the BP. That's the building priorities. And then next to that is the DP and that's the district priority. So, just kind of one through 47, uh, is in there. As you move over to the, the right there, uh, here's some of our funding sources, uh, special building fund, Q C puff, general fund, depreciation, nothing in depreciation this year, and then other sources. So, um, I'm going to tell you that, you know, historically, we never are able to accomplish all these projects. Because of different reasons, sometimes we can't fund them, which is usually the biggest. And this year is going to be a, a, a much bigger challenge because, you know, I've got my bottom line sitting there, uh, with a total, um, that, you know, we're not going to be able to accomplish, uh, $4 million for the work this year. But, um, with, with some, some moving around and some stuff's already in place, some stuff's completed. Um, there's also some pieces down there, uh, towards the bottom. Uh, in particular, uh, there's an asterisk that says refer to individual building pages for the cost breakdown. That's on that first one. That's a, our needlepoint bipolarization project, which includes all buildings. And so, if I put them all on there, it wouldn't fit on the page. So, um, that, uh, that project, by the way, is, um, 99.9% complete. So, we're really happy with that, uh, just for the safety of kids. So, um, there's also some colors there for the fundings, uh, to the lower right, uh, where it's grant funding, booster contribution, E-rate, uh, Walnut Activity Fund, to, to name a few that we're, we're looking at this year. So, any quick questions as I, before I kind of start going down this list? Very good. So, mentioned the needlepoint. Uh, the next one, big one is the Howard Roof Restoration. Um, then on the list, uh, we, we do have some active things. One thing I'll mention too is how we prioritize is safety items first and then items that might cause damage uh, if we don't do, uh, a project. And then thirdly, uh, just, just rather needs that happen, uh, whether those needs are, you know, could be mechanical in nature, could be, you know, uh, flooring, um, the, quite a, quite a large list. So, uh, Howard's up there, uh, that are number two. Uh, it's about $275,000 undertaking. Um, I have a, uh, I'm going to go ahead and put this out for proposal, uh, this month because of the, the high, uh, priority that it does have. And I have a, uh, what we call a, a pre-bid on site, uh, Wednesday, next Wednesday. That's going to be nice and cool. So, uh, moving forward, um, another one that is a big priority and is a safety item is doing an upgrade, uh, on the science room hoods and HVAC in particular, um, at the high school. Uh, that's a, right now I've got a placeholder $400,000 for that. Um, I've also got for GISH, a security camera upgrade at $350,000. The only way we're going to be able to accomplish that is if we get a grant and we're making grant application, uh, later on this month. If that does not occur, then that will basically get moved to the side and, and then bring it forward, you know, onto the ne- another project list in another year. The next one is a Lincoln gym floor, um, and then the rest of flooring throughout the building, uh, replacement. Uh, they've been waiting in line, uh, for their turn. And so, this year we're recommending them. That one's at, uh, about $239,000. Again, what we'll do is we will, um, look at these projects. Some of these things, depending on how some of these shake out, they might, again, have to move to the side and wait another year, especially some of the big ticket items and that just happens to be one of them. Another one is the, uh, GISH weight room and equipment floor replacement, um, for $260,000. You know, the idea there, uh, this came to us, um, just recently, um, because of the stadium, obviously that big upgrade. Uh, now they want to, you know, move that forward. That's going to require some heavy lifting, you know, if, uh, from, from our booster club to, to move that forward. Um, another, uh, piece of that is to do the weight room, do some remodeling, add restrooms up there. Looking at that, I got a placeholder of $200,000 for it. Um, it could be less, uh, it sure won't be more. Um, Bar Middle School, uh, to, uh, air-condition the old gym. Yes, we did a bond project there, um, but one of the things we had to do was to value engineer that piece of, out of that project, uh, four years ago. Um, so bringing that forward, hopefully. Success Academy, uh, doing a, a camera, security camera upgrade, uh, $80,000. Uh, Wyandotte, kind of along that same line of, of safety for science and to do some additional work for their science, uh, area for $25,000. Uh, GISH, uh, phone system replacement, $129,000. Uh, that work has been completed, um, and is done. Corey had talked earlier about the, uh, network upgrade for the wiring. I have a placeholder $250,000 for that one. But again, that can move up and down. That will also, you know, require that E-rate, E-rate funding to assist us to move that forward. Uh, Neo Building, uh, phone system replacement, uh, that is completed and, uh, is done. And we'll be moving forward on other, uh, phone projects, uh, as, as time goes. Walnut Middle School, um, install an 88. Walnut Middle School, install an ADA operator on one of their doors, and actually it's one of the main entrance doors that falls into that safety piece, $15,000. Replace floor in their, for their larger restrooms. 1984 version, we've done the floor replacement throughout the building. The restrooms are one of the last things for us to do. Howard, install another ADA door operator at the employee entrance, $5,000, pretty easy lift. Connect room at a garage, you know, that building has no storage. We've taken over all the rooms for classrooms that used to be storage rooms. And so that's just to help them out. That's a $15,000 undertaking. And then also a connect room, double door at the entry. This is kind of an easy one for us too. They've got a set of doors that, as you would be in their lobby, will reposition it so that when we use the intruder emergency button, it'll close that down and lock, and then give us a way to add additional security for that building. Engelman, replace gyms with, gym lights with LED lights. That's a self-perform project that my team would undertake this summer. Bar, Walnut, and Westridge Middle School, sound system upgrades. This is something that we were able to move forward, and this work has also been completed this year. Wasn't part of last year, so that's why it's on this year's. Westridge, replace concrete at the northwest entrance. That's their secondary main entrance for two reasons. One of them is that we're having some heaving issues out there in irregular concrete, so it's a little safety issue, but we're also adding some additional area. As the building has gotten fuller, we find that we need more space for kids to, you know, be out, wait for their rides for pickup time. Newell, another floor replacement in the restroom for 10 grand. Another Newell area there was in their corridor, if you've ever been in Newell and walked down the hallway, you'll see some really nice looking 70's version carpet on the corridor walls, and so we're going to do some upgrade there. It's in need, and then, you know, they've been waiting for us to do that, so I think that'll be a great project this summer. Gates, replacing some wash basins. That's an older building, and so it's time. Dodge, they're needing to replace the exterior walkway lights at the main entrance area. Sometimes it is a little bit dark in the mornings, and so this is another safety item. Howard, a piece that we need to do, continue on with their preschool that's occurring there is put concrete in the preschool play area there. Next item is GISH, recondition the EFIS on the two-story. This is, this is sections of that EFIS. This is going to be a little bit of an ongoing process, but we have areas that are damaged and things that, just, just for the look of the building is really what that comes down to. I'm hoping we can make that happen this summer. Endor House, doing the floor placement in their kitchen and also down in their basement for $8,000, and that's something that they'll be able to fund. Bar Middle School, tough point on the two-story building. We're having some water intrusion that's occurring there, and so we're going to try and tackle that this summer. And then also another item that is a carryover from the previous bond that we had to value engineer was replacing carpet, carpet in classrooms of the three-story. That's about 10 classrooms, I believe. Newell, wash basin replacement, Wasmur, wash basin replacement. See the Mile, replace existing exterior lights with LEDs. We do that for several reasons. One is just to do an upgrade to make the school have a little more modern look, just because the LED lights do a better job, as well as for safety, and it's a lot easier for us to not have to replace in the, in the middle of winter. Moving down, GISH, install sprinkler system at College Street. Again, something we deferred several years ago when we did the College Street project. This pulls that together. It also ties in a little bit with the next item there, which is a landscape project that is partially student-driven to create some pretty cool, they've got some really good ideas of what to do until we're on the north side of the building there. So really would like to see that happen. Walnut Middle School, do a new building sign with an LED display board for $45,000. That's, that's really the building stepping forward and using their funds to try to get that. That's, not every building has a building sign with an LED. They don't even have a building sign out in front of theirs, so, you know, really support that, and we can make that happen this summer. Another, a smaller item, but is to add some six TV locations for display boards, menu in their commons area in particular, and then one of their very large rooms we have to go in and repaint. So those are some smaller things, and that's kind of what happens as we get down towards into this list. You know, Newell is to remove some trees and replace concrete in that front parking lot for safety and just help with how that area operates. It's a little broken up, and so they really want to take that forward. So Star came to us to do an outdoor classroom. This would be a large amount. I don't know that we'll accomplish all that this summer because they're also pursuing many, many grant for part of that, so that could be a couple-year process. Engelman, replace lockers in the fifth grade area. That's a carryover from last year. CPI, modify the aviation lab door. You know, we found that the plane to go out the door, it would fit in the opening, but the actual door operator on it is about six inches too low. So, yeah. So we're, it's not a big project, but it does, it still makes the project list because it's anything we look at that's $5,000 or larger technically hits this list. Also, another item for CPI was a storage room, something that we kind of went past when we were doing that remodeling there a couple of years back. And then lastly is the principal building with the IT technology piece that Corey had mentioned earlier. So, okay, made it. I went through that very quickly, so if you have any questions, I'll answer them here. If perchance you go through this list and say, "Dan, I still don't understand this," shoot me an email, or we can talk on the phone if you do have any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Holinsky.
What is EFIS system?
EFIS, Exterior Finish Insulation System. So if you look at the two-story at Senior High, a good deal of that area, the brick goes about yay-high, and then it's the EFIS. And it's about two inches insulation with a, with a kind of a cementous coating on it. And so it's about 25 years old, and so after time with kids, well, we won't blame kids. Let's just say somehow sometimes holes get hit in it and things like that. And so we have areas there that we need to fix and address, and the thing about that, it's not like touching up paint. If you do a area like this, you'll see it. And so to properly do it, we need to go in, patch that properly, get the finish back on there, and then do the whole area with a new cut, with the revised color.
Okay, thank you. That was actually going to be my next question too, is how are you going to fix that? I got you.
Dr. Burrows.
A couple times during your presentation, you talked about value engineering, and you want to explain again to our new board members why we are doing things that we have labeled "value engineering"?
Absolutely. Great question. During the bond, you know, we have a certain amount that we were able to spend on projects. And so we're at $70 million. We go through those projects, and we address the different needs of the buildings. And so we had a couple, Bar in particular, that had a bucket load more needs. We added the square footage addition that we needed for the programming. We went in and remodeled most portions of it with flooring. But we also tried to address some other big issues like reconditioning the track, replacing some of the single-pane windows, air conditioning in the gym, an HVAC upgrade for the three-story. And those items pushed us past what we could afford for that bond project, for its piece and what it was going to cost, you know, back there in the bond times. And so what we do is, is we, we open up that bid, and we see what they, what that cost was, and then we go, "We can't, can't do this." Okay, we go back to the drawing board and say, "Okay, we're going to select this general contractor," and then we work with them on getting credits back to get down to the cost that we can't afford with RGC. And, and like I said, Bar in particular had a lot of things that we're, we're hopeful to do, but at the end of the day, you know, we needed to provide the additional spaces that that building needed. And so these things could be deferred until another time, and this is that time where I'm bringing some of that forward. And there's still some more things as time goes that I'll, I'll keep bringing back, like I mentioned the track. Because they're big ticket items. I mean, just a track project itself is a quarter million dollars. And you can see a couple of these amounts are pretty large, so. It's not what we want to do, but it's, it's just what we have to do to stay within the bounds of the funds that we have to spend.
Okay. Any other questions? Doesn't look like it. All right, so then you are up next with the construction update on 7.8. Do you have anything to share with us?
Yeah, I do. One last thing that popped in my head, though. Usually we would have an item 48 on here called contingency. We don't have that. As I mentioned before, this is a large list with some really big ticket items. So a couple of these, I can guarantee you, we'll have to take a backseat, and like I said, we'll move it forward in a future project list. So I, back on, just to head ELC real quick, I was out there with a construction meeting earlier this week. I would tell you, things are looking pretty good. Progress is staying on schedule, which is awesome, especially just with the weather that we've been experiencing. Right now, what, if you walked in, you would see that the majority of walls are all sheet rocked at this point. They're still working on some of that. They've got all their wall roughing done, working on just the usual HVAC, electrical kind of, kind of items that are above ceiling as time goes. You know, probably in the next report I'll be giving you is just, there'll be further, well, they should just about be all the walls done, sheet rocked, working on those finishes and getting ready to actually start some of the finishes that'll start occurring in that building. They've tore off the front entrance. With the way the weather is, you know, it'll be a month or better before they can actually start working on that exterior piece. But real happy with it. The space is, you know, when you walk through there, now you can, you can actually feel what the spaces look like, because the walls are rough, and have spent plenty of time at the old ELC, all I can say is wow. It's, it's so much, so much better, so much more useful, safe, and just real happy with what I'm seeing. With that, I'll conclude my report, and I'll answer any questions you might have on that.
Just a reminder, I think we have the tour of the principal building next week, is that right?
Yeah, next Thursday at 5:30.
Yeah, so, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
7.9 is the student representative report. Mr. Bartling.
Thank you. February, we're here, we're still in school. Great to hear. And I'm just going to start off with athletics. Big news recently, Islander Isaac Trout, who's a junior this year, scored a record, a career high of 57 points on Monday against Norfolk. That ties the state record for most points in one game, and he broke the school record, which was previously 43 points, which we're super proud of him for that. He already has offers from 20-plus colleges already as a junior in high school, which is really, really great to see, has got a bright future ahead of him. District wrestling is Saturday, and state begins on Wednesday, February 16th in Omaha. We'll see if we can send some people out there. Swimming is competing at the HAC tournament this weekend, and state's at the end of February. Spring sports begin in March 1st, on March 1st. Moving on pretty quickly to activities, and I'm going to need to go over to the podium for this, our singing Valentines recorded a quick thing for you guys, so I'll go ahead and put that up. And I'm in this group, just so you guys know.
Do you hear me? I'm talking to you across the water, across the deep blue ocean under the open sky. Oh my baby, I'm trying.
Boy, I hear you in my dreams. I feel your whisper across the sea. I keep you with me in my heart. You make it easier when life gets hard.
Lucky I'm in love with my best friend. Lucky to have been where I have been. Lucky to be coming home again.
They don't know how long it takes. Waiting for a love like this. Every time we say goodbye. I wish we had one more kiss. I'll wait for you. I promise you, I will. Lucky I'm in love with my best friend. Lucky to have been where I have been. Lucky to be coming home again.
All right, there we go. So yeah, that was my day today, about that 70 times or something like that. So glad to say that singing Valentine's Day was a success, though. We were able to spread Valentine's Day spirit across the school. Several different songs that we would go around doing, and that's sort of a tradition that we do every year. The only thing that we didn't get to do was normally you put a, like a, sort of a feather boa around the person who's getting the singing Valentine to kind of add to the embarrassment, but that just didn't happen this year, and I'm glad we got to do it today. On the topic of music, this Monday, the Jazz Orchestra and the Little Big Band at the Senior High traveled to the Aurora Jazz Festival, and they'll perform at the Grand Island Senior High Band Day next Tuesday. And then all of the show choirs will be traveling tomorrow to Aurora for the Aurora Show Choir Showcase tomorrow. Not looking forward to getting up at 5:45 for that tomorrow, but we'll see what, how that goes. And then we'll be holding our premiere event on the 21st after snow day postponement, so. The Unity Council, and I don't know if I mentioned this last time, for new board members, this year the high school has a new group that's focusing on bridging sort of gaps that have appeared in the student body and creating new relationships and forging those bonds. And we had started this project called the Voices of the Academies of Grand Island Senior High, and that's still something that we're working on. But a little bit of background on that, we're collecting stories from students to sort of show their diverse backgrounds and their different, you know, their histories, and then sharing those stories with those fellow students, staff members, and then eventually members of the community to sort of create a bigger bond around not only our school, but our community to sort of show how diversity is helping everybody. We are continuing to do that. We're still in the collecting stories phase, so we're still trying to get a good, healthy amount of stories so that we can, you know, we have some powerful and really good stuff that we'll be able to share with the community eventually. We're also taking on a variety of different projects to celebrate Black History Month this month. We've been working with- Um, we've been working with the district on a social media effort to promote prominent black historical figures and their accomplishments. Those have been on the social media platforms of Grand Island Public Schools. And then posters, um, of those people have also gone up in the school, which happened today, um, which I'm really, really glad to see. Um, we'll be announcing some more wonderful celebrations of Black History Month as time goes on. Um, one of the exciting projects that we're working on is eventually getting a mural in the school, celebrating all of the backgrounds that, you know, students at Grand Island Senior High represent, and sort of making sure that everyone's represented in that. And then lastly, I named this section Ken and the News and Community, which has kind of been a, apparently a bit of a thing. I glossed over it at the last meeting, but I've done quite a bit in terms of community involvement on behalf of the school district and the student body. Um, in January, I wrote a couple of editorials, um, regarding spending limits and standing up for the right of this body to regulate its own spending, which is a staple of Nebraska's educational system. Um, this was actually recognized in the NSEAs or the Nebraska State Education Association's February edition of The Voice, where it's featured alongside an Omaha-area teacher for advocacy for public education, which I didn't even know about until my mom read the newspaper. Now it's a little bit of a weird conversation to have. Yep, that is me. Um, I attended along with several of you, um, the NASB's Legislative Issues Conference. Um, and alongside President Hinkle and Vice President Albers, we stood up for the safety of our community, school, and my classmates at the city council meeting this Tuesday. Um, despite our efforts and the efforts of health professionals, the city council voted down the renewal of the mask mandate, as I'm sure you all know. Um, I'm confident that we'll find a way to move forward safely without this critical piece of community support, um, to continue to keep our kids in school, including myself. And then just a little bit of personal news, um, I committed to UNL, uh, very, very recently within the past couple of weeks, so I'll be staying here in state for, um, post-secondary education, and so I'm really, really glad for that. And with that, I'll field any questions that any of you guys may have.
Alright, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Holinsky.
Not a question, Kendall. You rock, man. I don't know how you do it all. Uh, you seem to be popping up all over. Um, and, uh, you impressed me, sir, even at this young age, so I just wanted to share that in front of everybody too, for you, because you, you're, you're killing it, man. Just keep, keep being you, please.
Thank you.
We need, we need more Kindles in the world, so.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Holly.
How much money did you guys raise with your singing Valentines today, and what will it go toward?
Good question. Um, I actually got this information today on my way out of the school. We raised a record five hundred, um, three dollars per Valentine, so that, I don't know what that math works out, so. We got a lot of singing done today. We had to split it up between four groups, but yeah. Um, the funding for this normally goes to, um, the show choir, or, sorry, the choir booster account. Um, and it's specifically earmarked, I think, for the Chamber Singers, which is the group that does that. Um, and normally Chamber Singers just performs at the school, so there's not a lot of expenses that go with that, but because of the opportunities this funding opens up, may start to travel eventually. I don't know what that's gonna look like, but, uh, it does open up a lot of doors that we didn't previously have open before today, so.
Awesome. Mrs. Jurgensen, Jurgens, I'm sorry, I don't know why I do that. Wanna make you a sound?
It's not uncommon. I'm often Jurgensen, it's okay. Uh, so, uh, to echo what Mr. Holinsky said, amazing. You are such an impressive young person in our community, so thank you for all of your contributions. Uh, can you, uh, can you talk a little bit more about the stories, the diversity stories from your fellow students? How will that be communicated? Are those video, or that, was that in writing?
Yeah, so, um, with the Stories Project, um, the nice thing about it is we open it up to whatever students are comfortable doing. So, you know, some people are really, really comfortable writing down their story, keeping it totally anonymous, and we totally respect that, and that's something we're enabling people to do. And then also, as time goes on, we're following up with students who are willing to do it in video and audio form, so that we can distribute those through social media accounts and stuff like that. Um, we don't have a surefire plan on how to distribute them completely. We don't know if we're gonna do that through like a dedicated website or something else like that. But the main point is past this year and continuing on to kind of keep this as an ongoing project, to sort of show, this is what Grand Island Senior High looks like right now. This is what our backgrounds are, this is what, who we are. Um, and just keeping that open past, you know, past this year, past my time, okay, so. Yep.
Any other questions? I would just encourage you with those stories to share them with elementary and middle schools, so that the kids have those heroes to look up to.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, Dr. Grover, your superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President. A lot of great information already shared. Uh, so I did want to, uh, just make you aware, if you weren't able to attend, that we, we did have the opportunity to participate in the state of the city today. Uh, was a little bit different report than what we normally give, but we talked about our budget and facilities, and so spot on with the report from Mr. Petch here, uh, tonight. Uh, so maybe you can catch some of that information. If you have any questions, um, please let us know. Right now, as far as the COVID nineteen update is concerned, our main focus is getting our staff vaccinated. So I'm working with the Central District Health Department, um, just this week, uh, we received a hundred and ten vaccinations on Wednesday. We were not expecting that, but thank goodness, uh, we have Mr. Lee Jacobson, uh, who is, uh, kinda organizing all of that, and we never know which vaccine we're going to receive, when we're going to receive the vaccine, or how much of the vaccine we will receive. Uh, but with the leadership of the pandemic team, we are ready for whatever we receive. So huge appreciation, uh, for their organization as well as their leadership. So right now, we have about thirty-six percent of our staff who have requested the vaccine have now, uh, received it, so that's good. We will continue to move forward with that. Um, and like Kendall mentioned, I also wanted to thank, uh, the Board of Education, along with our student representative, uh, for your testimony, uh, this week. And while, uh, the extension did not pass, we would like to continue to ask our parents, as well as our community, uh, to continue to be mindful that we are still in a pandemic. Um, even now, I think the latest news that we've been hearing this week is that they are recommending that we wear two masks, uh, so there is no reason for us to be out without our mask. And I know that our parents and our students will continue to support us in helping us to stay in school. Um, and just a update of a little bit of a summary from our Equity Task Force work, kind of reporting this out on behalf of Jennifer Worthington. Uh, she did want me to inform everyone that we are moving into phase two of our Equity Task Force work. Uh, we have additional members that have been added, including staff, parents, students, and community members. Um, and we have, with all the work from the empathy interviews and working with our task force, we are now in the throes of developing our action plan, and we have identified, uh, the themes that we'd like to address, and they continue to change and evolve, especially with the, the pandemic and considering, um, how we want to continue to personalize learning for our students. But right now, those areas do include discipline and attendance, student achievement, academic acceleration, graduation, differentiated support, early childhood education, and early literacy, communication, and extracurricular activities. And so we just wanna thank the Equity Task Force, uh, for keeping this moving. Um, so just a couple of announcements, spring break is the week of March the eighth. Um, and our child nutrition department is working on a plan to provide meals for the students, and I think that's so important. We've learned so much about the food insecurities of our students through this pandemic. And just, you know, without asking, uh, Chris Philman and her team, they just continue to look for ways to support our students and really appreciate them. That's extra time and effort, uh, because we don't normally do that, and they are making this a part to try to see how we can provide meals whenever we are out of school. As a reminder, our annual report is now online, uh, so, and if you would like to receive a paper copy, please contact us here in Grand Island Public Schools. We'd be happy to provide one for you. And so just as a fun fact, um, GIPS now offers fifty-nine AP dual credit and AP courses, and I think that is an increase, and so kudos to Mr. Phillips. Uh, so you can find information like that in our annual report. That was just a teaser, so go out and check out the annual report. Also, to all of our families, the registration is now open, so please go online, and also be sure to check, um, if you're interested in virtual school. Uh, that is a new feature that's added to our registration this year, uh, as, as we continue to round out our plans for virtual schools. So that concludes my report tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Barsness.
No, no questions, but I have in the past two weeks ran, um, across staff and, from the district, and they're just grateful to the board and all the efforts that has been done with the vaccine, so I just wanted to pass it on to you. Ran from the gas station to these different spots in the community, they're very, have shown their gratitude, so thank you.
I do have a question on that. So since we're getting, we, we never know when we're gonna get the vaccines, and sometimes I think it's when they have, you know, extras and they don't wanna lose them. How do, how are they guaranteeing then that the second shot will be there for these individuals?
I heard that like, come on, Kendall, I was like, are you gonna answer that? Thought maybe you had some intel. Uh, but yes, they do have specific, uh, doses for, uh, the second dose, so if you've already administered, uh, the first one. And, uh, Mrs. Anderson, she did notify the superintendent, um, just Monday, uh, that they are planning to do the second dose for the ones that received it at Grand Island Senior High School, uh, next Friday, that will be February the nineteenth, huh, which is good for us because it is a teacher workday, it is going into the weekend. Uh, and so, and we're looking to host it, um, at Grand Island Senior High School again for those individuals, if nothing changes. She and I have been texting here right now, so hopefully we're still on, uh, par to be able to do that. Thank you. Great question.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. The next item is unusual here. Uh, it's, it's a one-time item, we're not gonna have it here every month, but we did wanna share a little bit more about the Legislative Committee. Over the last few years, I think a lot of us who've been on the board for a while have noticed that in the legislature, things have kept ramping up and kept ramping up. And there, it just seems to be, uh, more bills that are introduced every year that impact schools. And, uh, things from reducing local control to diverting money, uh, to private schools and, and then now we have COVID, and everybody's always trying to figure out the property tax issue and stuff, so we, we have to be involved. So we're gonna share a little slide presentation here, and, um, feel free to ask questions along the way. The one thing that really impressed me is when I asked for interest on committees, every one of you asked to be on the Legislative Committee. So that tells me that you're all invested in it, and so that's, that's pretty cool, so thank you for that. We decided we may need to have, uh, a purpose and beliefs statement, and this is just a draft. We have some work to do on it. Um, but you can, uh, the, this PowerPoint is attached to the agenda, so you can go back and read it, but the main thing is just to state, you know, why are we doing this? Um, and advocacy obviously is one of the main roles that we as board members play. We speak for those who cannot speak for themselves. And of course, everything that we advocate for is aligned with our strategic, um, plan and goals and the support of that. Uh, we also feel like it's maybe time to start making sure that more of our stakeholders, from students to teachers to staff, to, you know, key communicators and everyone, understands where our positions are on certain bills, so that they can help us support if they, uh, feel so moved, but also just, um, you know, if they, they may get contacted by others to support a bill and, and just wanna understand where we are. So we're trying to figure out, how are we going to make this more visible to everyone? And, um, just help if people wanna, you know, do like a grassroots campaign on so, some bill in support of us, how like we can do that. So we're gonna continue to work on that. Take a look at this. If you have any feedback, feel free to share it. Uh, like I said, we are going to continue to work on it. Did I, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I missed this. So here's who's on the committee this year. Um, myself, and then I'm starting to attend the GNSA meetings. As we know, in the past, Mr. Harden has done that for us, but as he's starting to ease his way on out of the district, I'll take that over for now. Lisa is gonna help co-chair, and she's also, um, our rep on the NASB Legislative Committee. Dr. Bros is on it, Mr. Holly, uh, Dr. Grover, Mrs. Worthington, and Mr. Harden. Okay, so just real quickly, I think everybody knows this, sometimes people don't understand though that we actually to, have two senators that represents parts of GIPS. Uh, Senator Aguilar does the majority of Grand Island, but anything west of two eighty-one is, uh, Kurt Friesen, and he's from Aurora. He has a very large area, it kinda circles around, goes all the way up to like Fullerton and Palmer and all the way back down. So he has a tendency to focus more on the, the farming community, agricultural community. We, we still, uh, like in December, I think it was, we asked them both in to talk to him, and we invited both of them. And then our national congressman and senators, um, of course, our Representative Smith, Senator Fisher, and Senator SASS. And last year, uh, Mr. Shutz, who's no longer in the board, Mrs. Albers and myself and Dr. Grover, had the opportunity to go to Washington DC, probably about this time last year, cause we were there during the Super Bowl, to go to an advocacy conference, and so we had the opportunity to actually go meet with them in person. Uh, we did not get to meet with Smith or Fisher in person, but we did have a chance to talk to SASS. So some of the partners we work with, um, and again, this PowerPoint's there for you, and so you can click on these links, um, but, uh, cause when you hover over it, oh, I didn't really wanna do that, but okay. Um, it gets you to there, so just so you know, you can go out there and look, yeah. Um, the Greater Nebraska Schools Association, this is a group of schools that are like us in size, uh, they're the equalized school districts, meaning we get the equalized, um, money from the state of Nebraska, and so the main focus is on the formula, the TOSA formula, and how legislation impacts school financing. I believe it's probably now like twenty-five years ago that this was first formulated, and I think Dr. Joel was in our district at that time, and Mr. Harden, and then, uh, Dr. Winter, who at that time was in Scotts Bluff, kinda got this together, if I understand that right. That's, was kind of the origins of it. Um, and so they're very, very helpful. Kyle Farabas is the director, and so he is there in Lincoln, he's able to go and represent all of these schools. I think we represent, is it, help me out here, two-thirds of the school, or the state's student population, and so he's able to be there and, and, and rep, represent us at hearings and so forth. And then, of course, the Nebraska Association of School Boards, uh, they represent all-sized districts in the state of Nebraska, which sometimes they'll, that's why they have to take a neutral position on things, because something that works well for the larger districts may not work for the smaller districts and vice versa, but then there's other items that all districts are impacted by, and they, they do take positions. And as I said earlier, Lisa, um, is the representative on that for Grand Island. And then the Nebraska Association of, say, Association, sorry, of School Administrators, um, also provides us a lot of information. They work very closely with NASB, and they also work very closely with GNSA. The National School Board Association, uh, their advocacy efforts obviously are at the federal level, uh, but we do get information from them. And then the one I wanted to share with you, where we get a lot of our information, because they do a lot of studies, they put some financial studies together when certain bills are introduced, is the Open Sky Policy Institute, and there's a link there. You can get on their social media, you can get emails from them, you can subscribe to it, but they are really good at, um, they are bipartisan, and they are really good at just taking a bill and saying, here's what the impact would be. Um, and so they just focus on the facts, and they've been, uh, very, and they have conferences sometimes, and they're very, very interesting to go to. So what is your role? Uh, so even if you're not one of the four of the board members that are on the Legislation Committee, what can you do? Well, first of all, we will put all, we do have a Legislative Committee folder out in the bold fo, board folders. Uh, we will put minutes, um, of our meetings, plus, like Lisa's taking minutes from when she goes to the NASB meeting. I'll take minutes when I go to GNSA, and we'll put those out there as well, so feel free to read those. Just become familiar with the position that we have on bills and legislative resolutions, and then represent the GIPS position, um, as well. We are gonna start working on an advocacy handbook, so tips for testifying, tips for letter writing, and more, so that's to come. I don't know if we'll get it done this legislative session, just because things are moving really fast in Lincoln, uh, but we, we do wanna work on that. So, uh, just so you know, there's, sometimes you'll see bills that are specific to a class of school, like right this year, there's a lot for class five. Well, class five is Omaha-sized school, and so that, those don't pertain to us. And just if you're ever wondering, Grand Island is a class-three school district, so if you see bills. Um, there were, I think we heard in the legislative, how many of you went to the, uh, NASB's Legislative Conference? It was online. How many attended or watched it later? Okay, so a lot of you. It, there's what, six hundred and eighty-four bills, I think they said, and they're watching a hundred of them for schools, so that tells you the proportion. We've identified eighty-five that we wanna We've identified 85 that we want to watch from Grand Island Public Schools. Now, obviously not all of them will get out of committee and get to the floor to be voted on. So our list will dwindle as, as the time goes along, but right now, that's what we're watching. There's lots of them that pertain to us, just wanted to highlight two quick ones. Um, LB 364, which we just learned today that now Grony has signed on to this. This one is one we are definitely against. It has been on, um, been proposed by Lenahan for several years now. And it diverts that money that's set aside for public schools to private schools through a very, very generous, um, tax credit. And so we did write a letter in opposition, once Senator Aguilar just added his name this week. So we sent him the letter that we had sent to the Revenue Committee with our opposition, hoping to have a dialogue with him. We, we did talk to him about it in December, so we were a little surprised. Um, but this is a very inequitable, um, bill. And it, you know, we're, especially since we're focusing on equity in our district, it's, it's just really, really sad that this is getting traction. I don't think, i- i- and here, this is one that, uh, even if the Revenue Committee would not vote to advance it out of the committee, it'll probably get to the floor because Senator Lenahan has done that in past years, if I remember right. So, um, anybody else want to make comments on that?
I was just going to say Senator Lenahan is the chairperson of the Revenue Committee and this bill's in revenue. And so she can prioritize it, so I think there's a great chance that, I mean, it will get out of committee, it will make it to the floor. Um, I think now, um, how many people have signed on?
Don't forget.
Oh, sorry. So, um, I don't, I can't remember how many senators have signed on to this. Um, Aguilar was an, uh, an addition and then Grony, Senator Grony from North Platte just signed on, uh, today as well uh, in support of this. But, uh, I want, one thing I wanted to talk about is make sure that everybody understands that a tax credit is an actual credit to the taxes you owe, it's not a tax write-off. So if you owe a thousand dollars in taxes and you give $500 to a private school, then your taxes go down to $500. It's a very generous write-off and, and, uh, very inequitable to public schools and to the students that we serve. So it really, we need a grassroots effort to defeat this. We need people coming out of the woodwork to defeat it. We'll be there, but, um, I think they're getting a little sick of school board members. I mean, we've been against this for years. So we do need help from the community to, um, they need to contact Senator Aguilar and they need to tell them that he, they are not happy that he is, uh, signed on to support this bill. Um, he did not respond to Bonnie's letter. He knew that we were unhappy with it, uh, when we talked to him in December, we knew it was coming. So we need some help with this.
Ms. Wolf?
And I think when the hearing, was that what, like the third? I don't remember exactly, but in February, um, earlier, it's still February, sorry. Um, I think there were 22 letters of opposition. And so, uh, just so that way people know that there are, you don't have to physically go and testify. Um, you can write a letter of opposition as well and it goes on to record. I might need some assistance on how that exactly works, um, because I just did that for the first time. But just something, a, a way to know that, um, as stakeholders, you do have the opportunity to have your voice heard.
Okay, all right. And another one we're watching closely is, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Holly.
Okay, I was just touching back on what Ms. Albers had said. I think we're up to 18 or 19 senators now that have signed on to that. Seventeen.
Yep. Okay, um, so LB 408. And the one thing that, that's interesting, I'm going to go back to LB 364. The one thing that's very interesting about this bill is that we hear constantly from the governor and from the senators, property tax relief, property tax relief, property tax relief. Well, this takes millions out of the, the state's budget, millions. And there's no plan to replace it. So that means it has to come from what goes to schools. And it, and it's just, it's so disheartening.
The governor's funded this with $2 million, so there is money to fund this.
All right, so LB 408, Adopt the Property Tax Request Act. This one we're watching because it does erode local control, but there are several bills out there like it. So there is, um, and I'll show you here in a minute, there is a spread, the spreadsheet, this is just a picture of it. But out in our Legislative Committee is the spreadsheet with all 85 bills. We will try to keep it updated with the progress, like has the hearing been held? Has it advanced to general file and that type of stuff? There's links on the left-hand side for each of the bills, so you can go out there and see them. The other thing that's going to happen this year, because it, it happens every one year, so, meaning the year that ends in one, uh, is the redistricting committee, because it's after the, um, census, census is done. And so there's a lot of concern that because of this last census, there will be more, because as you know, our senators are based on the population base. And so there's fear that there will be more that will go to the e- east side of the state and fewer out in the rural parts of Nebraska. And I think, if I remember right, it was at one of our legislative conferences a couple of years ago. They said that, I want to say like 80% of the state's population is west of, uh, 27th Street in Lincoln. So the, the state is very disproportionate and so, um, it, that's a concern to a lot, so that's going to happen this year. So our efforts on the committee and as a board, we will continue to share information with key communicators. We meet with them every other month, we'll let them know how we feel about bills and ask them for support. Same with parent advisory. Um, we'll continue to talk to the state senators, um, and visit with them about how we feel either during hearings or, um, we do have our lobbyist Angela Amick down there to help us with that. And we're talking about, should we have town halls where we can invite the public on different areas? Op-eds, we may write, and then Lisa mentioned a little earlier about the grassroots training or campaigning that we may do. So this is just, how many of you remember School of Rock? Yeah, you do too? How do you know about it? But this, every time I, how does, I'm just a Bill's. Now, anyway, um, this is just very, very high level, but just to kind of help everybody understand. So you know, bills are developed and introduced and this has already happened for 2021. They, they have to introduce them very early in the session. But in the past, we have had some efforts, especially Mrs. Albers has helped work with, um, our senator at that time, Quick, to develop bills regarding vaping and the age and then also for, um, student and staff relationships and so forth. And so we can, we can get involved early on to develop the bill and then, uh, see that it gets introduced. Then the bills are referred to the appropriate committees within the state legislature. And again, this has all been done for 2021. And then every every bill that's submitted gets a hearing. And so this is in progress. And this year, because of COVID, they normally just have the hearings in the afternoons, but this year they were having them in the morning and the afternoon, so they are moving fast. And they're doing that because with COVID, they weren't sure like if there would have to be quarantines by senators and so they might miss some days, so they're just doing as much as they can, as quickly as they can. So by early March, they expect to have all the hearings complete. Uh, the committee then determines which bills will advance out of the committee and place on general file. But like we said, the chairs of the committee can advance priority bills, even if the committee does not vote it out. Um, and then, then that's where the bills are heard on the floor. Sometimes they run out of time to hear all of them and so that just doesn't happen that you're, that it's all controlled by the agendas and the speaker. And they have, uh, there's a link there that you can look at the rules they adopted this year. They, they're different than they have been in the last couple of years. But this is then when, when, at this point, is when our lobbyist Angela Amick, sorry, really shines. Because she's there and things move quickly and then she can wa- she knows what we're watching. And so if something starts to happen on a bill, she can make sure she talks to our senators. She can get back to us and say, what do you want to do? Because a lot of amendments can start happening, especially on some of those financial bills. And we have to figure out, is this a good change, is it a bad change? And so just having her there saves us so much money, because otherwise we'd have to have a district employee there like all, every day of the legislature and that's just not feasible. Um, so I know sometimes people talk about the fact that we spend money. I think it's around $35,000. Um, but it, it definitely saves us money to have her there watching for us. So that's, and so the, the stars indicate where we can actually get involved and, and, uh, make sure that if we need to, the senators hear from us. So any questions, anything that I missed that you want to hear about? I will share. This is the spreadsheet I was talking about. You'll notice what we did is we put the bill, a brief, or the name of it actually, what committee it's in, if it's had its hearing, um, what our position is, what our action might be, like letter, testify in person, GNSA's position and action, and then NASB's position and action as well. So that's out there for everybody to see in our Legislative Committee, so.
And I want to give Bonnie kudos because she spent hours coming up with this and there's links to everything. It's a really impressive document, so I'd encourage everybody to look at that. Um, the other thing I was going to mention is that NASB website, after we meet on Monday, they go back in and they, um, update all the bills. And so that's, that's a, something you want to look at every week after we meet on Mondays, because then you'll go back in and kind of get an update. There'll be links on there and, and, um, it's just kind of a constantly changing document.
So this is the NASB site, you go to Government Relations and then you scroll down. And I noticed Sunday, there for a while, I couldn't get to this and I think that's when they're making their updates. So if you keep going, well, I thought it was on this page, let me try again. Bill, oh, okay, come on. Bill's fall, there we go. Here's their position, so they have little pictures. There's our, theirs is cooler, so, but. And then I think when you, you can click out of these and that it, they do summaries on some of them and so forth as well, so. So that's a pretty handy site as well. Any other questions or comments? Anything else the other committee members want to say? Mr. Holly's not so sure that he was happy he got on the committee after the first meeting. He's a little overwhelmed, but.
I love this committee. I just didn't know that I had this much time for meetings and this much time for reading. You have no idea how much legislation I read after midnight.
It is a little overwhelming. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, if you do have questions in the future, just let us know. Okay. All right, so we're going to move to action items. And Mr. Barsonus, we found out that the, the light at her desk here is out and that's why it doesn't work. So you'll have to verbally say yes or no on the action items for tonight. All right, so 8.1 is the EAB contract, Mr. Harden.
Well, good evening. Uh, as a quick reminder, the EAB is a, um, very large, uh, worldwide think tank. 25,000 professionals worldwide. We've used them for three years and so this contract's for another additional three years. Uh, we've gotten a lot of great information on a lot of topics over the, and utilize them, continue to do so and, uh, for great benefit to the district, have timely, accurate and professional research on really any topic we can think of. So I'll conclude there and go from there.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Harden? Mr. Barsonus?
I recommend to approve the EAB contract for a three-year period. School year is '21, '22, '22, '23 and '23, '24 as presented.
Second, Ms. Wolf? Any discussion? Please vote. Mr. Barsonus, it was just. All right, motion passed. Okay, 8.2 is the Drawdown Loan Agreement Medical Pathways Academy, Mr. Harden. And wow, that's some rationale there.
Yeah, there you go. Um, so, uh, as a, I guess, uh, just a baseline, uh, as you know, we've been working, uh, with a lot of different organizations to try to develop the eighth floor at the CHI, hospital as a medical sciences pathway. And so, um, in working with the, uh, other groups, uh, we've applied for and received conditional approval for a $1.75 million, uh, CARES Act, um, Economic Development Grant for this project. Uh, as you also know, we've received a $500,000, um, contribution gift from JBS Swift and the district has committed a million dollars from their special building fund towards this project. So that leaves approximately 2.75, plus or minus, uh, left to fund the total project, which is just under $6 million, uh, in today's dollars. So, uh, for the feds to unlock the $1.75 million, uh, we have to have in their terms the resources, uh, and in the bank, ready to spend, uh, for the duration of the project. And so the duration of the project is as soon as we can get the money and get approval uh, and hopefully then, um, on or before, we'll say August 1st of 2022, so we could have this in play for the '22, '23 school year. So, uh, in working with a lot of folks and brainstorming, came up with the idea of what we call a draw, drawdown loan agreement. Um, for all intents purposes, it's a line of credit. We can just call it a line of credit, because that's pretty much what it is. Uh, working with Mike Rogers with Bond Counsel, uh, so hopefully you all know who Mike is, at least uh, folks that aren't brand new to the board. And Mike is a legal, uh, expert in the area of public finance, in debt issuing. And so we're not issuing any debt, uh, we're just simply applying for and receiving the ability to, if we would need to, uh, access $2.5 million of, uh, resources from basically a cooperative of banks. So a shout out to Mr. Kurt Hacker and Home Federal Bank is the lead bank locally here in Grand Island, along with our friends also at Equitable Bank and Five Points Bank. Uh, because they all three came together to put the security that would be necessary and to fill out all the regulated, you know, they're a highly regulated industry, the banking industry. And so they had fill out, uh, lots of paperwork and get approval, uh, for this line of credit. Uh, now, Grand Island Public Schools does not intend to access this line of credit. This is simply a bridge between, uh, when the feds need to have the money in the bank for the duration of the project and when we can raise the money by seeking help and support from, um, our benefactors around the state for this project. This is certainly, um, world-class, heavy lifting, uh, type of project. And I think we're going to garner a lot of support. Uh, and working with Tracy Skalberg, she has a high level of confidence that we'll be able to tell the story like none other and, uh, really engage people around the community of Grand Island and the state and who knows, maybe nationally. But, uh, so that's what this is all about. There's three different documents, uh, there's a resolution, uh, and we'll just place that in the, in the public record as a matter of reference, so we don't have to read it, Mr. Brown. Uh, so it's not like the levy resolution that we read into the public record. Uh, there is a, um, so, uh, secretary's, um, along with that, I think there's a secretary's certification. There's a promissory note and a loan agreement. And so, uh, the proposal in front of you is to approve those documents, authorize the district officials, which would include Dr. Grover, myself and Mrs. Hinkle. Uh, just execute the documents, uh, send them off to Home Federal, have them sign it. We can present that to the feds and hopefully, as short a timeframe as we possibly can, we can get them to unlock those resources, which then starts the ball rolling, uh, on engaging. And the work's already been, uh, heavily ongoing in trying to reach out to the community to raise money. So along with the other partners, it's obviously CHI St. Francis, uh, as an organization and their foundation, our foundation, Grand Public Schools, Central Community College. Don't think I'm leaving out anybody, but, uh, any other partners that we can figure out that bring something to the table, I'm sure we'll, we'll talk to. So, uh, that is what I think is probably the 30,000-foot view. Uh, we talked about it, it, last month and so it's an, an action item this month. And I would be more than happy to try and answer a question or two, if you have any.
Mr. Brown?
Unless there's questions. Um, for starters, um, we did have the, uh, quite the lengthy discussion at Facility Finance and we did have Mr. Hacker in and, and described it. It was really, I don't know, uplifting to have our banks come together. it. It was really, I don't know, uplifting to have our banks come together, our community partners coming together. Um, kind of, I've never really seen this, where we have three banks coming together and coming up with a, the, a package like this. So, we were always kind of thinking it was going to be one, well, three's even better. And it just shows that unity in, in the community and for, and for a really, really good project. So, quite proud of our, 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 our community. So with that, I would move to approve and adopt Exhibit A, Board of Education Resolution, Promissory Note, and the Loan Agreement for the Acad- Academy of Medical Science as presented, and authorize district officials to fully execute said agreement and negotiate any irregularities on behalf of the Board of Education.
Second, Dr. Bros, is there any discussion? Ta-da.
Castler?
Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, eight point three is the Aviation Rental Agreement that we heard about earlier from Mr. Phillips. Yeah. Do you have any additional comments that you wanted to share with us?
No.
Nope. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Barsonis, or did, do you have a question? Miss, how about you, Mr. Barsonis?
Nope.
Okay.
Who are you, who are you going to pick?
Well, I saw you first, so I'll go with you first, so, okay.
I recommend to approve the Aircraft Rental Agreement as presented.
Second, Ms. Wolf. Any discussion? Please vote. Yes. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, eight point four is the Principal Building IT Connectivity Project that we heard about earlier. Anything else you needed to share with us?
Nope.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Barsonis?
I thought I had shut off. I'm just happy my light was working, I guess. Let me get here. I'm in the wrong one. All righty, I recommend the, approve the Aircraft Rental Agreement as presented. Hold on, I'm in the wrong one. Hold on. If it comes up. Oh my goodness, there it goes. Recommend to approve the purchase of equipment and services to provide network and internal access to the principal building as presented.
Second, Mr. Brown, any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes, thank you. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Nine point one is Finance and Facilities Committee, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I'll be, uh, reporting from a minutes from February second. Um, we had a request for proposals for copy paper. Uh, we did have a discussion on the nutritional services and basically update. They're still continuing to train on their new Titan software. Also, discussion that they're really having a hard time with staffing, um, and keeping staff. So we're looking at a, um, a, a review of, of wages and, and whatnot, and so there may be some actions that come out of that in the, in the future. But just to note, we do, are, are having some staffing issues and filling all staff. Um, the, we had an upgrade, update from Mr. Gerhart. Obviously, the things that we talked about this evening were the main topics. We reviewed the, the, all the funds, or the depreciation special building general fund, that we had, uh, the federal programs, uh, all were discussed. Um, WASMIR part-time reading interventionist, we had the presentation there, and we've heard that before. Um, we did, um, hear the project list as Mr. Petch um described, maybe just a little more detail on that. And again, there's a lot of supporting documented with that, so each building has a nice stack of, of, uh, of records from history. And so if you ever, ever are bored, um, it's really interesting to see what we've done to the buildings over the years. Um, we did, um, talk about the aviation contract as we just approved. Um, we got an update from Mr. Harden, who continues to bring a little bit of clouds, oop, where is that in here? Little clouds to the, our, our meetings. Uh, um, in this case, it was the, the, a decrease in our um, uh, state aid for next year. Um, so that's, um, yet to come. Um, we did, um, get some information on the CARES Act two-point-oh, where we, there is some money headed our direction, um, how, how it's going to be spent, uh, and, and when it's here, it'd be two different stories. Um, we did, um, discuss again with the, the, the Drawdown Loan Agreement, and again, we had Mr. Hacker from Home Federal there. Um, and again, it's a, just a great opportunity for our community to come together and, and really help us out. Uh, talked about the Workforce Prep Agreement, the Facility Fini-, or Facility Master Planning for the principal building, we discussed that, and we talked about having a tour, which is happening next, this coming Thursday. Um, so, hope, if you haven't been in it, it'll be a great opportunity to see what's, what we have. Um, did talk about the CFO Transition Plan, so Mr. Harden still thinks he's leaving, and he's still looking at, uh, sometime in March as a target date, so still looking at trying to figure out, um, life without him. And, uh, and like I said, that's, we have a lot of different moving parts there. We did look at the Regional Planning Commission notes, and really no concerns at this point. Uh, surplus property, we do have a list of things that will be coming out, um, for, on, on that. So we, again, another, another purchase, or another selling of old equipment. Uh, with that, I conclude my report, and our next meeting will be Tuesday, March second at seven-thirty.
Nine point two is the Leading for Learning Committee, Ms. Jerk, Mrs. Jergens.
Uh, yes, so we met on February second, and Mrs. Flower and Dr. Palmer discussed virtual school for twenty-one, twenty-two. They provided an update on the elementary virtual school proposal, and that was discussed in a town hall. Teachers and students that are thriving in this environment want to continue to see the benefit of that moving forward. So the considerations for connecting virtual school, excuse me, connect, considerations for next year include connecting virtual school to a building with onsite opportunities and experiences for those students. When parents are registering, as Dr. Grover had mentioned earlier, when pa- parents are registering for twenty-one, twenty-two, there is the option available in there to communicate that they do want virtual. And then L4L is also exploring the possibilities for middle and high school to have virtual moving forward. Onto college with Mrs. Gernstein, she and Dr., excuse me, Mr. Gilbertson, presented on how students are benefiting from the John Baylor Onto College ACT Prep. Students from within nine through twelve are meeting goals and increasing their ACT scores. This will be the first full year of the implementation because of COVID. They take practice tests, they engage in review, learn tips, strategies. There's a lot of in, uh, additional information in the folder for reference. And the academy update, Mr. Phillips, I have to say, I personally really enjoyed this presentation. He had a lot of fun images, and I would like to see these in person whenever I have the opportunity. Students are experiencing real-life situations in the emergency, emergency services pathway, and they're using an ambulance simulator. The Academy of Business and Communications, Mr. Hartel, he started a Future Billionaires Club. There are two aviation grants being worked on to increase to larger simulators. They would have five screen panels and create a realistic environment for the, for the flight students. In robotics, they have ninety-two students and are, the students are able to take ownership of their learning and prepare for upcoming competitions. And then we have been chosen as one of four districts to participate in the Charles Bowser Youth Leadership Initiative. And that's credited with starting the first career academy model. So we would initially identify as a small, with a small group of students from the Unity Council as well as staff, and the team will expla- expand to include community members as well. Uh, we're also in L4L, we're re, having a book study with Joe Feldman's Grading for Equity, and Dr. Palmer had us split up the chapters, so we'll all read different pieces and then come together and discuss and review. And that concludes my summary. Our next meeting is March second.
Nine point three is the Personnel Committee, Mr. Brown.
Back again. Uh, I'll be reporting from minutes from February third, but we actually had two with an update as well. Um, we had the, uh, discussion on the WASMIR Title One Specialist. Again, we had a presentation from the principal proposing to move Title One Funds to hire a halftime position, uh, for the, the specialist, um, to provide targeting interventions to students in grades two through three. And I think we may have seen something similar to that tonight. Um, we also had, uh, an update on the GIPS organizing and ESL endorsement through Dune University this year, um, resulting in nine GIPS staff who received ESL endorsements. That's great. That's internally. Um, and so, looking forward, we've actually reached out, and we have another twelve, um, staff members that expressed interest, so we are planning to offer the course again next year. Um, we appreciate Dr. Lovos', um, willingness to continue teaching, um, classes, and again, what a great, um, resource to have available. AROI and Strategic Budgeting Update. Administrators participated in another professional development session with DMG on January eighteenth. Through their work, um, we were looking at collecting feedback from administrators identifying potential areas of budgeting and investing focus, um, specifically in our strategic plan moving forward. In broader terms, we're looking at social-emotional learning, behaviors, mental health, early literacy, coaching, professional development, um, and, and RTI, MTSS. Uh, the next steps would be, um, identifying the specific investments that the GIPS wants to move forward, and, um, looking at an equity formula that would be developed and used basis, and based on these investments, and identifying how we'd pay for those investments. So more to come. Substitute teacher fill rate, exciting news. The district continues to experience strong um fill rates. Um, um, since the time we've returned from Christmas break, we've averaged a ninety-six percent fill rate over the last five, um, periods, so, good news. The MTSS coordinators, Mr. Stock had a discussion with us, um, and proposing to hire two full-time MTSS coordinators for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. It aligns with both what we're doing with the DMG and our strategic budgeting. The only problem is, is we're not the only ones in the market. We have other districts, ESU-ten, U-N-L, all recruiting for MTSS coordinators right now, and most likely not enough candidates. So we're looking at, um, trying to scramble a bit to get those positions filled. Uh, staffing update, we had certified staff. We had sixteen notices of retirement or resignation affected at this current year, and the certified staff, um, HR is still recruiting, um, to fill several para vacancies, assistant custodians, and several positions in nutritional cer- nutrition services. Administrative staffing, obviously, the Chief Financial Officer, we have two interviews that are scheduled, um, for two thirteen, and the Chief of Human Capital Management, Mr. Self, um, will be posted in the near future. Um, with that, I conclude my report, and our next meeting will be March third at eight-thirty.
Thank you. All right. Nine point four is the Policy Committee, Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. We met on Monday, and I'm sorry, I already forgot what day that was. Um, was that the eleventh? No, the eighth, sorry. Um, and on that day, we welcomed new committee members and committee, or individuals that are returning, um, from a time away from policy. Uh, during that time, we reviewed, uh, fifty-three-ten transportation, fifty-three-ten-point-one administrative procedures for transportation of students. Um, the guidelines were updated because, um, it involves students in private vehicles, and specifically the social workers were asking for guidance on that. We moved it to board approval, uh, for a board approval. For, oh my goodness, for the board to approve. Seven-three-three-seventy-five, request for reconsideration of instructional and library collections materials. This was an interesting policy that came about. Um, it was because of an integration specialist who was wanting to know if there were guidelines for adding materials to the library collection. So a process, um, for requesting reconsideration of those materials has been drafted, including a form. Selection criteria would apply to any materials in the library and classroom, school collection, and private colla- collections, whether that's in the classroom or within the library itself. Discussion included continued use of the challenged material during the reconsideration, the starting point for reconsideration, and how to engage the community in a curriculum advisory committee if needed. There are incredible resources avail- available through the National Library Association. Um, Dr. Dexter will take this draft to L4L for review and return it back to policy next month. And, um, we discussed, it's time, student hand, parent, student handbook for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Can you believe it? We're almost there. Um, so she just brought that and mentioned that there are some very limited edits, um, and she has a committee review and edit the handbook annually. Um, the edits are going to consider, um, Title IX information, uh, the addition of our equity statement, um, addition of vaping tobacco course for intervention, and minor data and selection label edits. Um, and this will come back to the Policy, um, Committee, and then hopefully move on to the Board of Education in April. In regards to LGBTQ students, um, we visited about restrooms and participation in activities. She let the Policy Committee know that, what the current practices are within GIPS with gender identity. Processes and practices within GIPS accommodate as much as possible with respect to concerns regarding gender identity. Current policy being worked on is online learning, and just want to differentiate that it's not virtual school. Those are different things. Um, and she provided an overview for the new members of the development of this policy, and no further updates at this time. We have a handful of policies that are tabled to the Board of Governance, Governance Committee, and they have been looking at them, um, previously when I was on it, and they're still looking at it now. We plan to Zoom together again on March eighth. I conclude my comments.
Thank you. Nine point five is the Public Relations and Partnership Development Committee, Mrs. Owers. Art, wait a minute.
I had that very well, is that me?
I was thinking it was Carlos.
Hey. Pass it on to me.
Okay.
I, I saw your name, and I'm like, well, I thought it was me. I wasn't going to let you speak, though. Hey, hey. So, we met February fifth, uh, and, and we, we start with beat on the street, um, and we did a quick recap and talked about the GIPS Town Hall that we had, and so far, back then, we had twenty-eight-hundred views, uh, in the English, and in the Spanish version, we had eighteen-hundred views, and talked about the work that has been done. We received the annual report, and again, uh, you probably hopefully have copies. We are also going to do, or continue to do that push. We did the virtual piece. Uh, so far there is good and positive, uh, report from the community, and, um, I really enjoyed those QR codes. I thought I would never get into those, but, uh, I figured how to read them with my phone. I guess I'm getting to that age. But, uh, if you ask Siri, she will read a code for you. Uh, we talked about the analytics and social media calendar, calendar, and again, this conversation has been about how do we continue not only to track the clicks and track the video, but also what is the impact that it's being done, you know, and there is no, uh, right or wrong, it's just really how do we continue to grow and, and gather that feedback. Well, Dr. Grover introduced the idea of a tri-city alliance, which would support staff who wants to move into the principal role, a principal role, and this would be a collabor- collaborative effort with three school district. So it's still in draft, draft form, but I think, again, as we continue to, uh, lead, as we continue to participate in the stuff that we're doing, why not continue to support our own staff? Let's see, uh, if you haven't, the February and March heartbeat episodes will focus on activities and athletics at Gia, at Grand Island Senior High. And you heard a little bit from Kendall about the Unity Council and Black History Month, so they're still continuing to share that information. And we will continue a conversation about a hashtag for Spanish-language families. Um, and again, this continues to be part of our equity efforts of how do we are a, one district, a one school, and really be inclusive of everyone. Uh, we talked about our input on our website, and what thing, uh, what do we need to do better? How can we continue to improve the work that we're doing? And for the Income and Freshment Orientation, it'll be virtual this year. So we did get also an update of how, uh, students that are coming in are getting a postcard, and in the postcard, there'll be- And in the postcard, there'll be a link to videos and things are gonna be virtual. Had a chance to watch the introduction, so having the student ambassadors lead that conversation is pretty neat. I remember when we started having those conversations with academies and we looked at a couple of videos from a different state and they had school ambassadors. And we thought, oh, that was a pretty cool idea. And now, here we are doing the same thing. So, our next meeting will be Friday, March 5th at 8:00 AM. And with that, I conclude my report.
All right. Thank you. Grand Island Public Schools Foundation Report, Mrs. Jurgens.
Yes, the Foundation Board meeting, that took place on January 20th. And it is scholarship season. So, the deadline for GIPS Foundation Scholarship applications was February 10th, so that's done. But Tracy Skalberg does need scholarship reviewers. It takes approximately 100 volunteers to get that job done and that's a big task. The volunteer reviewers will start their training the last week of February. And let's see, the busy, takes about three weeks. And she needs to know if you would like to be a part of the review. Anyone who would like to volunteer is welcome to as long as they're not related to a GISH senior this year. The foundation is also gearing up for the Add It Up To Opportunity Staff and Board Campaign. The campaign focuses on testimonial stories and the students who benefit, and the students who benefit, excuse me, Foundation Director Tracy Skalberg will address the board in March or April regarding this campaign. The foundation has purchased an institutional ticket for the National School Foundation Online Conference this year. And the sessions will take place in afternoons on February 23rd through 26th. And she just needs to know if you want to attend because as many want to, they can. She just needs to hear from you about that. The Foundation Board has approved the goals and strategies designed in the strategic planning session with the matched nonprofit consulting team. The foundation's Strategic Planning Task Force has met to further define the work that we'll be making and will be making a recommendation to the Foundation Board to redesign the committee structure and assign the goals and strategies to the committees. An executive summary of planning has been included and she, Tracy, did ask that I let everyone know. They need to read that, please. The other action items on the Foundation Board's agenda this month included Classroom Grant Award Recommendation, 2021 Scholarship Offer and Award Plan, and approve the 2021 Scholarship Reviewers. Tracy Skalberg also hosted a foundation presentation for the new Board of Ed members that we were able to attend. And that was really great. I've been able to be a volunteer before for reviewing those scholarships, but to hear her full spiel was pretty helpful. And then our next Foundation Board meeting will be on February 17th at 5:15. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. So, you'll notice that the Governance Committee is missing this month and that's because I dropped the ball and did not get our meeting set up. So, I will be reaching out to the Governance Committee member soon to set a meeting. 9.7 is the NASB Monthly Update and it's there for you to look at. I think they talked some about the legislative bills, but then Marsha Herring also shared about the new member training that I think just completed, the online versions that you could go to. And then talked about some upcoming training for leaders and I think they're gonna have that in person. So, starting to move that way. All right. Agenda 10 is an executive session for the purpose of certified staff negotiations because it is in the best interest of the public to discuss this matter in closed session. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Albers?
Getting myself confused. I make a recommendation for the Board to convene to executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Barsonis, please vote.
Okay. I need a motion to reconvene from executive session. Mr. Barsonis, is there a second? Second, Mr. Hillinski, please vote. Okay, motion passes. And now, number 12, we do have action necessary. And who was making that, Dr. Brows?
I move that the Board of Education approve a 3.45% total package increase for staff represented by the Grand Island Education Association for the 2020-21 fiscal year as presented.
And is there a second? Second, Mr. Brown, any discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes. All right. Our next board meeting will, is a different date because of spring.